Hi, everyone. My name is Lisa Gavoni. I'm the Housing Planner for the Montgomery County Planning Department. I am joined today by my boss in the audience, David Onsbaucher, who's the Chief of Countywide Planning and Policy. Today, I'm going to give a brief presentation about attainable housing strategies. And then I want to hear from you, so I'm going to open it up to questions. One disclaimer is this is a very dense presentation packed with a lot of information. So please feel free after to ask clarifying questions. I'm more than welcome to also talk offline if anyone would like to have a follow-up conversation. So way back in 2021, the county council asked the planning board to consider and recommend zoning reforms that would, quote, "allow greater opportunities for missing middle housing in Montgomery County." Attainable housing strategies is that resulting effort through which the planning board prepared recommendations to allow the development of more diverse types of housing in the county, including missing middle housing, and we'll talk about what that is in a second. So I'm going to start off with a little of data points that kind of talk about framing the attainable housing strategies recommendations and why we think that these recommendations are important. So first, the average detached home in Montgomery County is getting larger. It's increased by almost 2,000 square feet since the typical home in the 1950s. And this is largely happening through the teardown rebuild process, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, which is when they take down an entry-level home that's more affordable and build out a much larger house that is less affordable than what was there. This is largely done by right. And what by right means is that you can go straight to the Department of Permitting Services, get your building permit. There's no community engagement. There's no discretionary planning board review. It's a by right process. Also, in 2023, the average detached home in Montgomery County sold for $970,000. That's compared to $440,000 for attached structures. And I've been giving this presentation a lot, so people always ask what the median is. The median is $900,000 for detached structures. If you look at this chart, you can see that the range at which the structure is sold in. So if you look at the blue, you can see that mostly they were mostly sold in the $1 million to $2.5 million category and the $600,000 to $800,000 range. This is compared to attached structures in that $400,000 to $500,000 range. And we know that size has a big impact on affordability. Naturally, if you build them smaller, they're not going to be able to charge as much as you would for a large detached structure. So I'm going to jump right in to the recommendations. You may remember on the first slide that the request was to look at missing middle housing. And missing middle housing is part of this initiative, but it is part of it, not the entirety of it. So missing middle housing is a term that was coined by Optico's design that describes a range of house-scale multi-unit structures that are compatible in scale and form with detached single-family homes, largely referring to duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes. Attainable housing that offers more diverse housing types beyond just that missing middle scale. So it includes things like small apartment buildings, townhouses, and stacked flats. And stacked flats are basically structures that look like townhouses, but they're one unit stacked on top of each other. So I'm just going to jump right into the recommendations. So first, the zones that are applicable. Every parcel in Montgomery County has a zone, and that zone dictates what you can do with that property. In Chevy Chase Section 5, you are all R-60. And R-60 typically means that you can largely only build a detached structure, a detached house. There are certain exemptions for that. You can also build things like schools and religious institutions and other things through optional method, which is discretionary planning board review. But largely, you can really only build detached structures in the R-60 zone. So our recommendations really focus on three scales, three tools, and three geographic targets. The first is we're talking about that missing middle scale, those duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes within the interior of single-family neighborhoods. We're also talking about a medium scale, which is a housing structure like townhouses or small apartment buildings through something we call the optional method of development. And the optional method of development requires discretionary planning board, our planning director, review, which means it's not by right. You can't go straight to DPS. There's some level of review for these projects. And then for a large scale, we're talking about our growth corridors that were identified in Thrive Montgomery 2050, areas of the county that have been identified for growth, places like Connecticut Avenue or River Road inside the Beltway. So first, I'm going to talk about the small-scale recommendations. Then I'll talk about the medium and the large scale, and then some other things like parking and other elements of the recommendations. So that small scale really is that house-scale structure. There's the duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, generally in the same form, massing built form as a detached home, just more units than one. They would be allowed in the R-40, 60, and 90 zones. You would be allowed to build duplexes and triplexes everywhere and quadplexes in the priority housing district. And I'll explain what the priority housing district is on the next slide. They would be allowed to be built by right with conformance with a pattern book. And I'll talk about the pattern book in a couple of slides. So basically, it's what we're calling a guidebook that someone would have to adhere to to be able to get their building permit from the Department of Permitting Services. The development standards, so things like setbacks, height, lot coverage, would be the same as they were, will be, were the same as they are for detached structures right now. There are no recommended changes proposed for the small-scale recommendations on height, setbacks, or lot coverage. There would be some allowance for reduced and onsite vehicle parking. And how would we implement these recommendations? So they would be implemented through something called a zoning tax amendment. A zoning tax amendment is a piece of legislation similar to a bill, but it only applies to Chapter 59 of County Code, which is the zoning code. A DTA modifies the standards and the text of the zoning code and makes changes to them. So I mentioned previously on the slide about the priority housing district where you would be allowed to build quadplexes and you would have further reduced parking standards. This shows a map globally, but I zoomed in on Chevy Chase Section 5, and it is entirely in the priority housing district. So what that means is that there would be further reduced parking standards, and I'll illustrate that in a future slide. And you will be allowed to build quadplexes, not just duplexes and triplexes, in the interior of a neighborhood. So next, I'm going to jump into the medium-scale recommendations. That type of housing we're thinking about is townhouses, stacked flats that I mentioned earlier, and small apartment buildings. They would be allowed to be three to four stories tall. They would be allowed in the R-60 zone within 500 feet of a Thrive Montgomery 2050 identified growth corridor like Connecticut Avenue or land that's identified for a floating zone in a master plan. So it would be a master plan recommendation. It would be through that optional method of development that would allow that higher density and that greater flexibility in exchange for an additional level of scrutiny for review that would either be reviewed and approved by the planning board or the planning director. There would be allowance for reduced setbacks, increased site coverage, and requirement for public open space. And it would also be implemented through a zoning tax amendment that would establish and create that attainable housing optional method and would permit that allowance of that unit type and that type of housing within 500 feet of the R-60 zone out of a growth corridor. Like I said, this is a map of the attainable housing growth corridor. You can't really see it. It's a 500-foot buffer of the growth corridor. But I zoomed in to Chevy Chase Section 5. And basically, all of these properties in blue along, I believe that's Connecticut Avenue, would be allowed to build, would be allowed to build up to 19 units, a small apartment building, townhouses, or stacked flats. And finally, for our recommendations, we have large scale. We again are talking about a lot of the same structure types, stacked flats, townhouses, but they would be permitted to be built above four stories. Again, we're talking about the geographic context of those growth corridors like Connecticut Avenue. And it would also have preliminary site plan approval process similar to how it is today for development of that size that also requires planning staff and planning board review. The standards of the zone would follow the similar standards for our commercial residential, mixed-use of zones that we have today, and follow any recommendations for guidelines from overlay zones like the Bethesda Parkway. The implementation would largely be through a master plan, so it wouldn't be through necessarily a zoning tax amendment like the other two. It would go through a process that I'm sure some of you went through with the Bethesda Downtown Plan or the upcoming Friendship Heights Sector Plan. It would be a years-long process where we would evaluate every parcel for its potential. So in that form, the implementation tool for the large-scale recommendations is very different than the small-scale and the medium-scale recommendations.
Wait, I'm sorry. I don't understand. Are you saying that the process in Friendship Heights and Bethesda is entirely different from this process? And then you would be going lot by lot here? Or are you saying that this would be, like, this would be a comparable process with a master plan?
This would be a comparable process to what we go through through master plans. Like, the Bethesda Downtown Plan was a three-year, you know, process with a lot of community engagement, a lot of looking at parcels for their individual zoning capacity and talking with property owners in the community. This would be a similar process to that. So I mentioned earlier that there would be some reductions allowed for parking requirements. And I'll just zoom in to the R-60 zone.
So we don't have parking requirements. We're already overparked.
So parking requirements are a requirement for all new development. Generally, you are required to have two spots per unit. That would be cut by upwards of 75% for the parking minimums for attainable housing strategies.
Yeah, park as it is. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
It'll be underground.
Where are those cars going to go?
So it's one, it's a parking.
Yeah, let's just take one question at a time. Would you like us to finish the presentation first?
Yes, we should finish your presentation. Let's definitely.
Oh, okay.
You're doing thank you. You're doing great.
This was actually the second time that I've given this presentation in this room, so I feel like it's like muscle memory at this point. So parking is perhaps the biggest question that I've got. Not surprisingly, I like to call this portion of the presentation when I get tomatoes thrown at me. We understand that there's a lot of sensitivity around the parking issue. One thing to be clear is that these are parking minimums. They are not parking maximums. So the market is free to provide more parking than is required. And so I talked earlier about the small-scale recommendations requiring conformance with a pattern book. So the pattern book is something that we are developing in line with the attainable housing strategies that would lay out a clear path for getting these building permits for small scale. It would be a one-stop resource for all building, for building all attainable housing types within each zone. It would be an easy-to-use tool to review and permit applications that would help facilitate the production and we think add value to these neighborhoods. Some of the elements of the pattern book would be things like massing, the built form, what we're calling neighborly details, things that we think are desirable to see in these types of structures, like front porches, where on-street parking, which should be, the placement of the building, and frontage design. So that's for recommendations. I want to be, you know, very clear that this is a study. This is initiative. This is not a zoning tax amendment. These are the planning board's recommendations that they send up to the council that are currently being reviewed by the county council. We have an upcoming road show that actually starts tomorrow, a listening session with the council president, Andrew Friesen, and the planning director, Jason Sartori, on attainable housing strategies. I've made this presentation available, and there's an RSVP link there. These are the upcoming listening sessions that I urge you to attend. And if you cannot attend at this link, there's actually a way to provide comment on these recommendations to the county council. So with that, I'm sure there's many, many questions, so I'll stop there.
Please raise your hand.
We have someone right there. Start there.
But what I'm trying to understand is how you ensure that this would actually be affordable. I take it by attainable, you mean affordable. Well, but I mean, right now, there is denser building just north of here. It's Chevy Chase Lake. You can look to Friendship Heights. And granted, the building is, you know, more dense, but it's all luxury. I mean, I can see that this would change the character of the architecture, but it looks, my first reaction is that you're going to have luxury development just at a tighter scale. And so if what you're trying to attain is something that's attainable, the developers who are going to come in will build denser, and they'll stack more property in the lot. But the idea that it's necessarily going to lead to more attainable and affordable housing as opposed to where the development goes around here is high-end. This is a desirable neighborhood. It tends to be luxury development. It'll be, I get it, more compact, denser. But what are you going to mandate in some way? That there's a pricing cap that's going to include, be included in this? I mean, how are you going to ensure that the development goes on isn't just denser, high-end, luxury development that doesn't make anything more attainable for anybody?
Sure. So that's a great question. That's one we get a lot. This is not income-restricted affordable housing. This is market housing that is more affordable due to its size and type of housing. It will be more attainable than a new detached structure. We've done the analysis on that. Surely, it's not, like I said, it's not income-restricted housing. I can certainly share the analysis with you.
We're not going to have a civil discourse.
Raise your hand. I saw a hand right there.
Quadplexes in Section 5?
He said quadplexes in Section 5. Yes.
Ice cream cone? How's that? So four plexes in Section 5, is that what you said?
Yes.
Irrespective of the size of the lots?
So if it can't fit on the lot, then it can't fit on the lot.
What does that mean?
So that means that there are certain development standards, you know, setback, lot coverage, that would make it incompatible with building a quadplex. Then they could not build that structure on that lot.
But they could fill up the lot as much as the zoning would permit, irrespective of the size of the lot?
Yes, that happens today.
Well, it happens today, but if you've been to Section 5, you would see that most of the building in Section 5 is not tear down a small house and build a big house. It's adding on to 100-year-old houses. So your program basically is encouraging teardowns. And in addition to encouraging teardowns, to use up the maximum portion of the lot so that houses are not only quads, but they're quads close to each other. That's the goal of this program?
Sure. I don't think the goal is to encourage teardowns. So teardowns are not a phenomenon that's happening in the county with increasing regularity. We're trying to make a process that is competitive to that process that builds smaller, more attainable structures than the new single-family detached homes that are being today. If you're saying that you don't see teardowns in your community, then you probably won't see this because it's going to happen in the same market.
I don't think you're right about that. If you throw out a carrot, which says to a developer, if you tear down this house here, you can build four, I don't think you're right. I don't think that it's going to have the same reaction as it would today.
Sure. I mean, I'm not going to argue with you.
I'll just tell.
Yeah, that's true. Fine. We've looked at other jurisdictions and how this has happened in other jurisdictions like Arlington and Minneapolis, and we think we would follow a similar path here. But I understand that, you know, we don't know what's going to happen.
I'm going to ask you one other question. I'm sorry to take up too much time. Okay, I'll just get past it.
Kevin Bromberg, Section 5. So go back to the slide with the 500 feet and the requirements there. So I'm confused about, how many houses would you say on Williams Lane are in the first 500 feet? Should we say four, five? Can you count them? Six. So six houses in Section 5 are within the 500 feet. So let's take that as a given. So there's two alternate processes that I heard, and I wasn't sure if they worked together or not.
Sure.
So let's say owners two and four are interested in doing large scale, up to 19 units on their lot.
Medium scale.
Do they go through a master plan? Or they could just go ahead as a matter of right and put 19 units on their lot?
So that would be the medium scale. That would require discretionary, so that would allow up to 19 units.
Why is it medium scale? I thought it was large scale.
So large scale is the master planning process. Medium scale is the optional method, attainable housing optional method, which requires a layer of review. So it's not by right, but it's in between small and large scale.
What's medium scale size?
Up to 19 units. So it's town.
That's up to 19.
Small apartment buildings and townhouses.
So what width does an up to 19, what width does a lot require to fit up to 19 units? Or is the height can be 110 feet?
The height can only go up to four stories. I'm not sure.
So could this possibly happen in Williams Lane, more than six units?
If they assemble multiple properties, probably yes.
But a single one?
A single, probably not, probably not fitting 19 units on a single one.
So if owners two through four?
If you're assembling multiple properties, then yes.
And again, so two through four, they're going to have to go through a master plan process?
No.
Or they're not?
They would have to go through planning board or planning director review, which is a master planning process. Let me back up for a second. So the medium scale isn't that optional method of development. Optional method of development is a type of review which requires discretionary review by the planning board or planning director. So planning staff would, you know, write a staff report, and it would go to the planning board or planning director for review. Large scale, we're talking about master planning process. That's a rezoning of a specific parcel through, after a two- to three-year process that we work with the community and our development partners and other agencies to develop a long-range vision. So medium scale is kind of, you would be implemented through a change to the zoning code, not a master plan.
How would one get a change in the zoning code?
Through a zoning tax amendment, which changes the text or the standards of what it means to be in that zone.
And who approves the zoning tax amendment?
The county council.
So if property owners two through four want to sell together, they'd be going to the county council?
No. So that zoning tax amendment would go before that. That would allow them this process. So they would have to go through, so to get this done, they would have to come to the planning department first. First, and then.
Second to the council.
No, they would not go to the council.
Then they're done. So this sounds like a good time for owners two through four to sell for many multimillions of dollars. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say that I was under the impression, like this gentleman, that attainable meant affordable, and it clearly does not. It means density, and it means maximum value per lot. For instance, at Chevy Chase Lake, that huge apartment building, each one of those apartments costs more, by and large, than all the single-family housing, than any one of the single-family houses in Section 5. Second of all, there's a very good example of, I guess, what's coming is in, I think it's a 4,000 block of Wall Street, just off Wisconsin Avenue. There was a house there that was probably built in the 30s, very modest house. And on that lot, they had built three single-family row houses, each one of which is selling for $3.8 million. So attainable has nothing to do with affordable. All it's going to do is bring in more wealthy people and cram them in with no place to run.
So I think that you're right. And Chevy Chase Section 5 or this area is probably wanting to be more wealthy individuals. But there's parts of this county, I think about outside downtown Silver Spring, for example, places like where we are starting to see more teardowns that probably will be a lot more attainable to more households than a new detached home.
Maybe you should look at where you're doing this than to try and jam it into the entire county.
We can look forward to then Chevy Chase Lake five buildings sweeping down Connecticut Avenue into the neighborhood. If that's the kind of neighborhood you want to create, if that's the kind of neighborhood you want to create, yeah, fine. Get it out of there. Welcome to the neighborhood.
But Chevy Chase Lake, did that achieve attainable housing under your group? I mean, you've got to be careful.
Lyric is waiting.
I don't know the price points of Chevy Chase. I bet I can look it up.
I'm trying to keep track.
I have, I'm Lyric Winnick. I'm a Section 5 resident. I previously lived in the Village as well. Yeah, I have a question about infrastructure, like a lot about infrastructure. You know, you mentioned parking. Most of our roads are only wide enough to be single-lane roads. There is no way to get two cars up and down the street simultaneously. Emergency vehicles have huge issues getting up and down. I mean, you don't want to have a fire. It's a nightmare. You can't fit the emergency vehicles, ambulances, police cars, whatever, school buses, and also the sewer systems, all of those things. I don't understand how you're going to address these issues. Like, we literally can't get in and out of our streets. We're often trapped trying to get onto Connecticut Avenue. You can have a backup of five cars at different times of the day trying to exit Section 5 onto Connecticut Avenue. So what is the infrastructure planning that you anticipate taking place? You can say you're going to have, you know, parking restrictions, but if you put 19 units in something, like, how are you going to get people in and out? They're not going to bike, and they're not going to walk. They're coming with their cars. If they can't park there, they're going to park on other adjacent streets. And how is this going to work? What's the thought process here?
Sure. So first, I think it sounds like there are issues now that need to be looked at beyond the scope of this initiative. I would also say that, you know, we have existing processes that look at infrastructure. So we have an adequate public facilities ordinance that's implemented through the growth and infrastructure policy that is currently underway. It's update right now. It looks at schools, transportation, it looks at water and sewer, and it looks at, you know, other aspects, too. We have processes in place to look at those things. These units will also pay impact taxes that will go to help fund infrastructure, which is.
Why an existing street unless you're going to go through eminent domain and take people's yards and reduce the lot sizes? Like, that's literally, I mean, is that what you're considering?
No, we're not considering eminent domain at this point.
I listened to Eric County Executive last Friday on YouTube. He had a five-minute blurb on this. I recommend, if you haven't done it, please. He does not like this. Okay? I don't know if anybody else has listened to it because he had someone in his office examine this whole Thrive thing, and he cut so many holes into it, and we've mentioned many of them tonight. But I have a question about undeveloped land that's been put aside for development, and the developers aren't touching it. And it's accessible to public transportation. And according to our county executive, there are 30,000 units that could be built.
So he's referring to the development pipeline, which are projects that have received their planning board approval but have not yet proceeded. Certainly, that's something that we're looking at that is an issue. That's a separate issue, our development pipeline. Development pipeline projects aren't moving for a variety of reasons. The financing, existing conditions like high inflation, high construction costs. Projects of large scales are having a really difficult time getting funding to move. So how is that? So we actually have, we have a project called Local Housing Targets, where we've set housing goals for the community, and we're looking at ways to move those projects forward to help get those projects built, too.
Is it on now? Can you hear me? I want to ask the timing question. The original rationale for this whole planning exercise was to attract businesses so that the county would have an housing for some 200,000 new people who were supposed to be nearby 20 years from now, wherever it is. How do you know where those people are going to want to settle? Well, one way you might find out is to ask where are businesses wanting to settle in the county? Since COVID, a great number of employees and businesses have been moving to exurbs, not to suburbs, from citizens. One would have thought that the place where most businesses are going to locate is where the land is cheaper, and yet the facility you're getting around the county is suitable. If that's true, it's not Chevy Chase. It's someplace else. It's Durham, Texas, someplace like that. Isn't this exercise backwards? That is, you do the housing first and then tell the business that there's a location here. But the businesses, of course, can't locate here because there's no land for them to locate on. for them to locate on, unless they're just retail along Connecticut Avenue. And, and the people who settle here can't commute to the businesses if they're not located here. So why is this preceding the attraction of businesses to the county?
Sure, so a couple of points here is, I think that Montgomery County is a desirable place to live, especially down county. We could look at the housing, uh, data that we have that shows that the average detached price has increased by thirty-two percent since COVID. Uh, we also know that we are losing middle income homeowner, uh, households in this county right now because there is no place for them to live. And even, uh, there's no place for them to live, to purchase home. I can only, I can only take one comment at a time.
I'd just like to ask if anybody else feels that this is a plan to uproot and tear out any component of a very, an historic neighborhood? With the value in the properties, it's in a store for value and condition. And then how the developers can then make money and appreciate the value of the homes here. It just seems to be the overall impression. Does anybody else feel that way? Is that?
Uh, Tom Eastman, I'm in section five as well. I'd like to follow up a point about infrastructure that was made and try to understand something you said in response to, is it Lyric?
Lyric, yeah.
What comes first, the horse or the cart? I mean, if you're going to have all this new housing, you're gonna need infrastructure. And the horse has gotta be the infrastructure, not the housing, because as was noted, parking is one resource, but to me, that's small potatoes compared to a width of streets, sewage systems, and lord knows, the storm drain system. Every time there's a thunderstorm, that backs up, and there are garageways and backyards all over the neighborhood that are inundated on a regular basis. And when we asked the county, gee, how about upgrading the stormwater system? I said, oh, this was built a hundred years ago, and I'm sorry, we can't do anything about it. So my point is goes to your response to Lyric is, if you have a planning, another planning group talking about infrastructure, what's going to the council first? Is, is the council gonna pass on this grandiose scheme for expanding wealthy condominiums in this area first, before they take into account, uh, the infrastructure? Because if you study infrastructure here, any engineer worth their salt is gonna say, oh my gosh, we're gonna have to do a lot of stuff in Chevy Chase before we can even dream of any of this stuff. So I guess this is part of a question and an observation. If the planning isn't going first, this idea about more housing is a disaster on multiple levels.
Sure, so the growth and infrastructure policy is actually at the council right now. There is public hearing today. Uh, attainable housing is not a big part of it, admittedly, right now. It will be part of the conversation. Uh, it's hard to know how many of these units will all get built to plan. So one of the things that we've done is, the growth and infrastructure policy usually checks in every four years. We've built a check-in for attainable housing if this should pass, uh, every, uh, the first two years, to understand the initial impacts and what needs to be done to remediate any issues with infrastructure things. And there's also, you know, the report also lists other issues outside of zoning that needs to be looked at. One of them is stormwater, uh, tree canopy, other issues outside of zoning changes that do need to be looked at in conjunction with this policy.
Hi, um, uh, my name is Hannah Gray, I'm a section five resident. Um, I have two questions and also wanna, uh, reiterate that I agree with all the points that have been made. Um, I live in a historic house, so it's individually listed, and every time I wanna make a change to my house, I have to get three separate sets of permits. Um, and I, I'm curious, um, for these new development types that would be approved. We, as section five, have our own building ordinances in place. Would they be required to meet our section five, uh, requirements? And if so, I'd like to empower our section to consider every means possible to make sure that any type of development that goes into our area is responsible and doesn't cause the kinds of problems that Tom mentions, which are, um, prevalent all over our community. Um, and my second question was, if you could clarify what type of development is supposed to be allowed in the yellow colored zone? I think the conversation has been focused around the blue zone, which is, uh, very intense, but I don't, it sounds like there's also some changes for the entire community in the yellow, and I, I'd like for that to be clarified for folks as well.
Sure.
That is an issue we're looking at now, and we've got a telephone call scheduled next week with some county attorneys to discuss that issue. It's a very complicated issue, compounded by the recently enacted Governor's Housing Expansion and Infruity Act, which has implications we need to talk about as well. But in, in a nutshell, development has historically been detached residences in the R sixty zone. And the authority we derive for our building regulations is set forth in what's known as the Regional District Act in the land use article in the Maryland Code. In the regional district, as communities began developing around the nineteen twenties, the Maryland General Assembly recognized there ought to be some agency overlooking all the development to make sure facilities were adequate, road to connect them properly, et cetera. And so empowered parking planning to make zoning subdivision land use standards applicable for the entire regional district, which is most of the lower Montgomery County. Certain jurisdictions were grandfathered, who were already exercising zoning, like Rockville, Gapersburg, Washington Grove, Brookville, Poolsville, and some others. So other than the grandfather jurisdictions, municipalities don't have land use authority. However, in nineteen ninety-two, we received setback authority, two thousand and six, we received magnetization authority, and we do need to clarify how those current rules would apply to the new types of development that are, are coming. So I would say stay tuned there.
And to be clear, that's a state code issue that planning does not, and the council don't really have authority over, but planning would be supportive of retaining your ability to make things more restrictive in community, as long as they're not more restrictive as what you give for detached house currently. Sorry, so currently, you can make things like setbacks more restrictive. We, at the planning department, are supportive of the municipality being able to keep that authority, as long as the conditions that you assign to multi-unit structure is not more restrictive than what you give to detached.
So I know we, I think it's clear that the new development is what is slated or proposed for the new corridor, that's five hundred feet on either side of Connecticut Avenue. It wasn't as clear to me what was being, what, what is new that's being proposed for the yellow area that expands past that? Is, is that the duplex, quadplex scenario? And those would be subject to the sort of visual. But, but you said there was some kind of like aesthetic requirements that they would have to.
Yes. No, they, the, um, they, we, planning, we can't override the restrictive covenants through local law, that's another, that's another state issue that, uh, a lot of delegates are looking at. Delegate Moon had a bill last session that did not pass that would make these restrictive covenants not allowable, but it did not pass, but it, it's also a state issue. Sure, so we, um, again, that's part of the growth and infrastructure policy where we do something called student generation rates. And student generation rates looks at the average number of kids coming out of each housing type, per county, per part, you know, different parts of the county. So we look at them by school cluster, school service area, like that, uh, other, you know, elementary school level, and we, um, we don't have any power over M C P S's guidelines, but we do have the, we do help create, um, impact taxes. So that is one part of the complicated equation that goes into setting impact taxes of how much this development would pay at building permit to proceed forward.
Schools are overcrowded. I mean, this is actually something I'm very familiar with, because I was P T S A president at B C C for three years and at other schools. The schools are overcrowded, the numbers that came out for Bethesda were totally wrong, which is why Bethesda, the production numbers were totally wrong, which is why Bethesda Elementary is overcrowded again, even though there was a boundary revision that tried to shrink the space and move other kids. So these numbers have been off, I mean, they've been off for two decades that I've been involved in the public schools. And the fact is that you would have to redraw all the high school boundaries, because like B C C is at or over capacity. You can't add kids. It doesn't matter how many impact taxes you get, the school can't be expanded, it has no more footprint to take over, it's finished. So if you bring in fifteen kids, let's say, the minimum, from just little section five, fifteen additional kids, you've already run B C C like above capacity. I mean, it's, it's at capacity now.
I, I would just say that we, that is something, I mean, I don't know about M C P S's numbers being wrong, obviously, that's not something that we have control over. Um, we do evaluate their numbers, but if they're wrong, it sounds like there's an inherent problem that I don't know how to fix, to be honest. It's something that we could bring up with M C P S when we discuss with them. But this, you know, this is an ongoing discussion, um, that is part of the growth and infrastructure policy right now that we're looking at.
Sorry, just one quick clarification. You said that the large scale allows growth along the corridor? Does that mean Connecticut Avenue could have large scale?
Yes, if there were a master plan. So there would need to be something on our work program that says, we will do the Connecticut Avenue master plan, and then five years later, we would, there would be potential zoning change. Thrive Montgomery twenty fifty identifies Connecticut Avenue as a growth corridor, an area where we want to see growth. That's a much longer term vision than the small and medium scale.
But the plan does say that that's the goal.
Yes.
Which brings me to kind of a rhetorical question, just for thinking about. In terms of your capacity as the planning committee and the county's capacity overall, we, Daryl and I, we got a driveway permit just for permeable favors, and that took well over six months with an existing program that was so simple. And, um, so are you all prepared for this?
It's a great question.
I, 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 I would love to talk about that more.
I don't know what's going to happen, um, but we're prepared as we'll ever be, I guess.
Okay, I was a government employee for forty-two years, and, and I've seen some shocking lack of planning before, but, you know, you, I'm, I'm afraid we're, we're giving a bad name to planning. So my, a two-part question. The one is, what planning, if any, was done by qualified people with regard to infrastructure, sewer, um, uh, traffic, parking? Give me one or two more. Schools, all right, we'll just stick with that. And then the, the second part is, did you have any conversations with citizen groups about any of these issues before you came up with the plan? Because my experience is, talking to people before you put pen to paper probably is a smart move.
Sure, so on, we have a, a lot, very large planning staff, we have school planners, we have transportation planners.
Were they involved in?
Yes, they were.
Okay.
And I, they're very qualified, and, uh, I, I do not appreciate you insulting our staff.
The second part was, did you have any conversations with citizen groups prior to putting pen to paper?
Yes, we did.
And those were?
There's a lot of conversations that's noted in the report about who we met with and who we had conversations with.
Hi, good evening. Um, my name is Beatrice, and I live on Leland, which is a very busy street and often a cut through for traffic. And, um, I'm, just wanna give a little example, I lived in Nashville, Tennessee. The growth there has been tremendous with a lack of planning regarding traffic, et cetera, infrastructure. They don't have a subway system, we obviously do. But with regards, you're changing the entire landscape along Connecticut Avenue, which is essentially your view, correct?
Correct.
Okay, which, we chose to move here, okay, over New York City, over a lot of great other places. We chose to move to Chevy Chase to raise our children and to own a home, which was very similar to a home that we could buy in Richmond, Virginia, saves. Nice families, nice people, I've gotten into a lot of my neighbors, I've had my neighbors over to my house for barbecues. That essentially goes away with your plan, correct?
I don't think it'll go away, I think you'll still have a wonderful.
But if I'm in that five, within the five houses, I think you could ask anyone that lives next to me, they've been in my house for a cookout. So I'm just saying, you're, you're changing the landscape of what these families experience living here when they've chosen to invest.
Sure, and I would also argue that all housing is value. I feel like, I live in an apartment building, I'm a really good neighbor, I promise. I feel like I add value to the neighborhood that I live in too, and I think that those new neighbors will also add value to this community, community too.
Hi, it's me again. I was wondering if you could speak to how the rezoning would impact commercial development and where that might be, um, an option on, either on Connecticut Avenue, in the blue zone? I don't think we've heard about that, and I think that would be interesting to know.
Sure, so I don't think it impacts commercial zones at all. R sixty typically does not allow commercial, um, which is the, the primary zone that's down county, typically only allows detached housing. So it's pretty much gonna only impact that zone.
Is this on? Okay, all right. In your, um, in the report that was, um, linked to, um, some material we got, and you may have referenced it already, uh, there are a variety, well, a small handful, let's say, of, um, cities in, around the country that are, have attempted to do something similar and on which you've patterned your plan. I would say it's probably safe to say. From what I, without having gone back to those cities, you know, websites to see what, what's going on, I didn't see that there was any real solid indication that this program is satisfied. to how the existing residents feel and how it affects their lives. I mean, people, you know, it's, it's already, if it hasn't been stated, people have spent, you know, their adult lifetimes in, you know, in the neighborhood, increasing the value of their homes, contributing to the schools, and so on. That whole scenario could change within five, 10 years, or over a period of, let's say, five years, starting in how many years, we don't know. But who knows? Does anyone know?
Sure. That's a really, that's a really good question. So a lot of these changes that other jurisdictions have made have been really, really new. So Arlington just passed theirs last year. Minneapolis, I think, was 2019, and they've been caught up in a lot of lawsuits. I think the first year they only sold three triplexes citywide. So it's not something that we think is going to have rampant housing production immediately out of the gate. We think this long-term, we see this as a strategy, but not the only.
How long-term?
I, 2050 is a much longer, so a long-term vision.
I would reach a peak or to start to really end.
So I think to kind of, I guess, ramp up, I don't, I don't know.
We don't know. It's so, it's so new at this point. We're not seeing a lot of communities that have produced a lot of middle of the city housing at this point. Ryan, Montgomery 2050 is already pretty quite your plan to fully implement, but we're not seeing a lot.
That's my.
Well, take it.
Trying to get people who haven't spoken yet.
Hi, my, my name's John. I live on Thorn Apple Street, actually in one of the original houses in Chevy Chase that was built by the Chevy Chase Land Company in 1898. And I just wanted to reiterate, is it Brooke? What's your name? Yeah. Oh, Beatrice, sorry. What Beatrice said, you know, we all moved here for a reason. You know, this is a historic neighborhood, and we all bought in to the unique character of Chevy Chase and Section Five. You know, we have settled our families here. We've made huge personal investments, not just money and being here in this neighborhood. And if we wanted to live in a place with 19-unit buildings, we could live anywhere, anywhere in the country, not here. And in terms of getting community feedback, I spoke to my neighbors, nobody knew about this. Everyone is shocked. There's going to be passionate resistance.
Yes.
Passionate resistance. The only person, I don't want to speak for other people who would be for this, is if you want to flip your house to a developer, if you live on a good lot with a cheap house and you can make money on developers. So the other thing is, this is going to be so divisive. And the best thing about Chevy Chase and Section Five, it is one of the few places with harmony. It's not political. People have each other's back. It is such a beautiful culture around here, and I'm really afraid that this is going to pit neighbor against neighbor. Who's going to sell when people sell in the middle of the neighborhood to put up a 19, you know, unit building? And, you know, I, I just wonder, obviously, there's a process here, but are you guys willing to, you know, put this on the existing community against the kind of resistance you're going to get? Because it's going to be ugly. I'm telling you, this is not a small thing. You know, probably many people here, like myself, never been to one of these meetings, you know, you're not.
You're just a lot of excitement.
I, I know. I can, I, I can tell. You know, we just appreciate all the work, you know, the work you do. You know, we obviously submit a lot of plans if we want to do anything for our houses, but like Ashley does such a great job, you know, we benefit from that. We've never had to do that. We are going to have to get organized. You know, we're going to have to fight for our community, and we're fighting against people who aren't from this community. They've got like some master, you know, housing activist or housing plan or some, you know, macro view of what they want to do on our communities with our families. And it's going to be, it's going to be really ugly.
It's been ugly in other communities that I think, I don't know, one that passed without a lawsuit, to be honest. We understand that. I just want to reiterate, you know, this is probably my 20, at least 25th of one of these meetings that I've done, and there is a lot of diversity of thought, maybe not in this room, but I've been to other community meetings where there has been a diversity of thought of on this initiative. Certainly, you know, it's your objective to, you know, give your neighbors and yourself knowledge and discuss this and fight for it with the council. We're not going to stop you. I'm here to give you the information and answer any questions that you have.
I mean, the last thing I'm going to give them, I would say there'd be, and people have mentioned, there's so many places where this could be additive to the people there, where like you could legitimately say this enhances the life for the community and the people around it, but you can't say that for Chevy Chase and Section Five. It's only a disaster to put up a 19-unit or even a four-unit building in these streets with, for all of the reasons that people said, many more that haven't been aired. So I just, for the life of me, do not understand why you wouldn't pick places where people can say this adds value, a legitimate person around saying, we're going to force this on a place where it's, it's literally going to destroy a lot of value, value broadly defined. So I know this is the first thing, but this is what's, what's, you know, coming.
So I see there's two gentlemen in the middle of the back row. So why don't we go one, two, three, and then we'll rush. So one, two, three, four.
How, you're, we're talking here specifically about Chevy Chase, Section Five. This, what you're proposing here is part of a, a plan for multiple communities though, right?
Correct.
So how, how granular is the consideration or not at all by the next level of review and approval, like at the county council or whatnot? So like, is there opportunity, as you, your team presumably assembled and cobbled together in ArcGIS, the little communities that you think are like-minded or similar to cluster in your proposal? Similarly, how, is there also an approach to granularly considering not including individual communities in your overarching plan here? How does that work? Or is it all or nothing?
Sure. So right now, the scope of this zoning tax amendment is countywide in scope, so there's no communities that are excluded, that are, are zoned, R60, R90, R200, or R40. We certainly have looked at a lot of, you know, number of properties, this is applicable to number of communities, HOAs, through our ArcGIS system. We've looked at, you know, the data that we can. A lot of it's in the report, but you know, I'm also happy if you have something that you would like me to look in. You know, I went, the last time I was here, I think with another Chevy Chase, they asked, you know, very specific questions, could you highlight the undersized lots in our communities? And we made a map for that municipality. So if you have specific questions you want us to look into, please let us know.
Well, what, what I'm getting is like, it's entirely doable to think about all the factors people have brought up about infrastructure. So if you created an ArcGIS overlay where you had a layer for age of infrastructure, width of roads, transportation potential, current value of land, right, where, where you're almost guaranteed that like the properties here are already expensive, you know, the attractiveness of buying one of these property, you know, like, I don't know, there might be an economic layer you could put over top of it, right? So I would venture to guess that for Section Five in specific, if you overlaid all those layers together, the equation here is far less favorable than in, for example, some of the other communities that are less dense, already less expensive. Infrastructure is more modern, et cetera. And it doesn't sound like that level of analysis has been done. It's just current zoning, go.
So on, in the report, we have a section that looks at the economic analysis, that looks at the feasibility of where we think this would happen. So that is in the report that looks at things like land value. In terms of infrastructure, I'm not actually sure that we have those sheila slaves. I can look into it that, though.
Is there a mechanism? I think the question is like, can we pull Section Five out? If nobody in Section Five wants this changed, is there a, is there a cap where that's achievable?
I don't, that's a county council question. The planning board set up their recommendations, and Section Five is not excluded, but that doesn't mean that, you know, the council can't do that.
My name is Matt. Hi, John. Hi. I guess we're all asking the same question. How do we make this not happen? And, and, and I, I know this very nice woman is, is doing her job, but none of the points we're making are ever, she's not going to be like, you know what, come out, we're not doing it.
I think we have to turn that into county council now, both all of you and all of us. I mean, there will be letter sent, there are going to be meetings, I will be attending meetings, but the more people reach out, that's the best chance.
Who do we reach out to?
Do we get the council members' email addresses? Please.
Okay. I think, I think that's the, I mean, this is great, but I think we should like, right now, begin a radical campaign of shutting this down.
Absolutely.
And make sure you.
Are the projections of Chevy Chase effective like us and coordinate those assumptions?
We've had a meeting, we've had at least, we have one meeting so far, which the entire area, I don't know if you can hear, but yes, I think we're all on the same, we're in the same position. Someone in the back has.
I don't, I guess I just also quickly want to bring up trees and the tree canopy because I think the, the old growth trees along Connecticut Avenue are a huge resource, and it would be a shame to have those go away. And then also sort of piggybacking on what other people have said, the way that this was come up with a mile from the metro seems a little strange to me. Like, if you live in my house on Woodbine Street, it would, it takes you a long time to get to the Purple Line. I don't see it as a, actually helping with a missing middle or providing housing that a lot of people would be interested in. So maybe there could be something, and to your point, I'm sure there are other parts in the county. We, I'm not trying to get in the way of missing middle housing in places where it works, but I think everyone in this room just doesn't think it works super well, you know, right here. And there are some places that are really close to us that I think it would work, so I'm not opposed to that as well. But I just, have you looked at other, you know, mechanisms for trying to determine where this would be? Because the mile from a Purple Line Metro, which who knows when it's going to be built, seems like a strange one to me. If you're actually trying to have more, more attainable housing in the county, it just doesn't seem like this proposal is doing that in our area.
Just a follow-up on that. The idea that you're going to allow from the Purple Line, there was likely a place someone's going to want to go, Bethesda. It's just as easy to walk to Bethesda as it's going to be to walk to the Purple Line by. And yet, maybe that on a train, God knows what's going to arrive. You get the Bethesda pass on your train.
But I'm not sure people are going to do either of those two.
Exactly. But I'm saying, if you were going to Bethesda, you're either going to drive or walk. You're not going to walk to the Purple Line and then ride the train.
It just, it just doesn't seem for our particular neighborhood that it's doing the things you want. And, and I, I hear you on, you know, I think the county probably does need more housing, and there needs to be, you know, things looked at. So I don't think that this room is trying to get in the way of everything. I think we're just trying to ask some really important questions about the infrastructure and other things. And I, the only other thing that really, if I could say, so the one more thing that really bothers me, you have a couple on your website, and I have it on my phone, like a duplex housing that you guys show, and it is beautiful. It is like old stone and old brick. In our neighborhood, those would be like $2 million duplexes. And so I feel like there's this huge disconnect of what you guys are saying it's going to look like and what it's actually going to look like if you're, you know, trying, or actually going to do. And I, because you've sort of kicked the can with this, what do you call it, like the playbook or?
Pattern book.
The pattern book. We don't really know as residents what any of this is going to be, and so it's really hard for us to say, like, oh, it would be okay to have a duplex next door. But I can guarantee you that the pictures that you show in that slideshow are not going in Chevy Chase if someone's trying to find attainable housing.
So a little bit on the, the one-mile radius. So they were picked to align with the accessory dwelling unit parking requirements of where there's reduced parking for accessory dwelling units. So that's why that was chosen. The, the sec, so the accessory dwelling units, the current ordinance that allows them, they have reduced parking allowed in the zoning code, so we tried to align where the reduced parking is for accessory dwelling units with the reduced parking.
Do we have assistance people who need to walk to the metro?
We bring that up with the planning board, we talk about. So we look at the walk share data mostly, about like where one of the walk shares would be. The planning board decided not to use that data. They, they, they felt that straight line buffers are easier to understand and align with existing policy, so.
So if you have a house that's, so people can walk from that, you're just too far to leave or walk.
No, I don't think that's the plan. I think that the understanding is that the, the network is consistently changing from, this is what the planning board said, that we hope that the one-mile will be walkable. We understand that people have different conditions. Certainly, one-mile walkable to me are, are gave is different than, you know, yours. So understanding that the conditions change.
Do you allow and so can to get a chance to sleep before people speak again, so? Quick question, and I know this was discussed earlier. What is the definition of attainable?
Very good.
It's just, it's more of a description of market rate housing that's diverse in the type of housing allowed, allowed beyond detached housing.
So what is it? It's different for every community rate.
It's different for the community rate. And then the report has an attainability index.
It's one size fits all. It's market. It's market, no size fits all.
We already put it, no size fits all.
The only thing this audience is the one size fits all. This would create a lot more options for housing.
For different markets.
It's like an 1,100 square foot apartment right now that's being sold is 800, and I think the new ones in Chevy Chase Lake are like almost, almost $900,000 or 1,100. And you guys say that you're looking at 1,500 or 800, but it doesn't feel, I don't think by any of its stuff.
I think we're confusing attainable with affordable.
And also, you know, we've seen smaller structures being built. There's a kind of a downtown super spring called the Octave that was an adopted reuse of an office building. They built, you know, smaller entry-level units, and by the market units, they were, 80% of them were bought by first-time home buyers. So size does have a big impact. Maybe not here, like you said, but in other parts of the county, certainly that is possible.
We absolutely agree with that. Who else hasn't spoken yet? I just want to make sure.
I keep hearing you say a couple of things, and I don't know how to understand the irony.
You keep talking about like middle income, which, you know, has happened in other parts of the city, and I'm just trying to figure out, like, how are you keeping that at, based on their salaries, that these homes will be that price? And also the infrastructure piece that keeps coming up, even just building these new homes, the homes next to the new home, they're getting flooded, their basements are getting flooded. That's just a house, not a duplex. And then the third part is, do you know about Silver Creek Middle School? That they built that school a few years ago, and it's already beyond capacity?
I didn't know that about Silver Creek Middle School.
That is definitely something your staff should be looking into.
So our, our school planner would definitely know.
Those three things, the infrastructure, the water, and then the schools.
So we do have a schools planner that is looking at those issues on, on staff. You brought up, your, your first point was about.
The middle income, like affordable housing, based on their salary, are you going to have homes that are affordable?
So this is not income or sugar that will happen, so it'd be based on the market and what the market's there.
But there is to know if we have smart, there's always change in the market.
So there is some analysis that we've done of what our other jurisdictions, Arlington in particular, did about what price points we think these units would sell out, and I'm more than happy to send that to you, and you can see how it compares to any detached structure. I can send that as follow-up material.
This, this is for the Section Five council. So do we have the capacity or historically have we ever hired, you know, consult, like actual planning consultants that would have comparable expertise to the, the county's planning council, right? So it's one thing for residents, the board itself, attorneys to weigh in, but there, that's not like-kind expertise weighing in on the practicality of the plan. So do we consider hiring or can we hire, like?
Yes, we can, and we can do it in coordination with other parts of Chevy Chase. There's no reason, I mean, we're pretty aligned on this, and we have already had some conversations about hiring someone, some perhaps, like a lawyer or a planning person, and so we'll take this talk about.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question about the process?
Sure.
I mean, you made the recommendations before the council. You're now on a, finally getting input. You've gotten information from residents who hopefully may be blowing up some of your assumptions, such as whether this is going to, you know, result in even attainable housing. I mean, what's the next step? Are you, are you going to revise, resubmit, do? I mean, what, what?
Sure.
If you're getting information, like, what are you going to do with it? Is the report going to be revised? Are you going to be subject to review? Are you going to take the information you're getting and say, well, wait a second, maybe some of these assumptions aren't going to fit here in terms of what we were hoping this would be paying?
Sure. So we're not going to revise our report. The planning board set up their best recommendations, but the county council will review those recommendations through a zoning tax amendment that would basically outline the report and what changes the planning board recommends in a zoning tax amendment.
One follow-up question. Do you have absolute confidence in the recommendations that were made before you went and got this coming?
This is, these are the planning board's best recommendations. I have confidence in the planning board.
Hi, I'm Jeremy. I grew up in New York City and the street that I grew up on was actually deemed historic after someone tried to build a monstrosity on this particular street. Is there anything that could be done for Chevy Chase or at least sort of the older sections of Chevy Chase to have it designated as historic?
Historic designation is an option. And properties can apply individually or in batches. And you go on the HBC website, the process is outlined.
I mean, it's a great question. And I will note, there's also downside to it. Someone was saying all of you want, you want to rent your house. Probably to do it on an individual basis, you're just going to limit yourself. Obviously, on a wider basis, it would be much more effective.
100%, I think it's just something to consider. If I'm worried about one or two neighbors building something like that next to me, which ultimately, and we haven't really discussed this, could actually lower my property value if that thing is next to me. So it's sort of going to, you know, as we were talking about earlier, hitting neighbor against neighbor. It's sort of like, God, I'd love my neighbors, but do I need to do this so I get out at the right time?
No, you're right. There's a race created to, whoever the first to sell to the developer is going to pay you a ton because then everyone, your neighbors' property value probably drops. And they're the first one to go.
Greg, can I make a strong suggestion to the council? We are giving back $700 every year in our taxes. You could hire a zoning lawyer and bite this tooth and nail.
We can do it without worrying about the other thing.
I have, I have two quick questions and then I'll pass the microphone to you. When, in this part of the planning process, did people from the planning board make site visits to the impacted communities? Have you visited all the different communities in Montgomery County that, you know, like, like Section 5 and Section 3 and everybody else is analogous? Have you walked the streets, done traffic studies, done some of those other things that you would need to do? Made estimates also for sewer upgrades, things like that? Was any of that done in the planning process?
I don't believe so.
Okay. And then my, my second, my second sort of question is, you talked also about like the walkability, I think. Has anybody looked at the sort of safety situation? Especially, we have to cross Connecticut Avenue to reach the metro and to reach Bethesda. I happen to be someone who walks my dog every day into Bethesda, actually. Most people have seen me do that. I will tell you that I, and I walked my kids to school at BCC for years. It is absolutely terrifying crossing Connecticut Avenue with the signal. This is a constant conversation that we have. Cars do not stop. I mean, you are taking your life in your hands making that crossing. And you've got to be really on it. So I, what consideration also to just, if that, that's your thought? I mean, what is the safety planning that has gone into for any of the streets?
Sure. So it sounds like that's an issue outside of this that should also be looked at through discussions with our staff.
Yeah, no, obviously, Connecticut Avenue is a state highway. The state is responsible for upgrades. But it is, I don't disagree with you. It's an existing problem up there. It's an existing problem on most state highways.
I'm not going to ask you a question. I'm going to make a statement to this group. Some of us have been around long enough to know. Several years ago, and this is about what you were saying about the historic definition, we were approached as a county by the Historic Commission. I don't know if you remember. And we, I thought it was great at the time, said, "No, no, because we were a nice community. We kept our houses nice. We weren't going to build albatrosses on our houses." And now I have changed my mind and I think we, we should go that way.
This will be quick. So I understand you have substantial expertise in the planning board.
I hope.
Okay. And so how many, if I was going to read the infrastructure analysis on schools and sewers and, and, or are there things I don't remember right now? How many pages would I have to read to come to any conclusion about how thoughtful and thorough those, that discussion was?
I, I think that's up to you and what you think is thorough. I'm more than happy to send you the report. I'm more than happy to.
Tell me how many pages you thought it was, 10?
Yeah. I don't know off the top of my head and I don't want to give you the wrong information.
So I, I think that it's very important. I think you've realized that apparently we have concluded there was a massive oversight. And those 10 pages or six pages that you can't remember probably should be 30, 45. And talk to the experts who are responsible for this. And you can't pass the buck to the safety people. If you're creating a safety problem that they didn't create, it's not an adequate response to say, "Well, somebody else is going to do it." Because you have too many effective points.
Thank you.
And I didn't mean to, and.
I know.
And to, to talk about your staff in a demeaning way. I'm just talking about the product that.
Understood.
The expertise that was there.
I'm going to make a suggestion. We will, it's right there. Unless there's people haven't spoken, we want to say something. I suggest we wrap up and then we close. We're still here for a few minutes. We'll chat. And we'll just talk about my staffs.
Greg, we have some tar and feathers.
This isn't even in the top five worst.
Hi, I'm Darryl. I live on Williams Lane. Just throwing out a crazy suggestion here, but as a community, we all seem united in this. Maybe as a community, we all band together and form some kind of entity that if someone is planning on selling, we buy their lot ahead of the developer and then sell it off. And yes, we'll, we'll buy it, it may be more than we sell it off for a single family. But if we all do this as a community and we preserve our house, our house value and preserve all the things we're talking about, maybe that's some way we can counteract that.
Yeah. So my contact information on, on the screen, feel free to take a pitch. I went on vacation last week and came back to like 300 emails, so it can't get worse.
I, look, I, I do want to sincerely thank you for coming. I think you can sense the sentiment in this room. Which I imagine is similar to the sentiment you had many other places. I think, I think the county is confusing two issues. There's an important issue about affordable housing. Figure out the right places for that. And meeting places that are made sense for identity, where you can get homes that are reasonable places. And then trying to figure out attainable housing. I mean, my big concern like is not whether someone can get a house in Chevy Chase Section 5, if they can afford a $2 million home, they're going to find a house.[1725.76]